There's my button. I just got my button turned on.
Yeah.
All right, as I said, I want to thank everybody for being here. We appreciate you. And if y'all haven't noticed, the lady in the front row up here, if she'll turn around and look at y'all, y'all have seen, she has voted.
Oh.
She, she has voted already. So for the ones that are listening to us, hey, early voting is going on till the thirtieth of this month, and then it has to wait till regular election day, which I believe is the fourth. Is that right, Ms. Pam?
Yes.
Fourth, okay, the fourth. So get out there and vote. You've got a, two city council members to vote for, and you've got a mayor. So get out there and do your voting, please. Thank you. All right, I'll, I'll hush up. I'll get off my soapbox here. All right. If y'all would please stand for our prayer, please. Lord God, we come to you tonight with open hearts, and we ask for your forgiveness. We ask for your strength to carry on what we need to do to just make this world a better place, make our city a better place for people that wants to come and live with us, to, just to help us grow, Lord God. We ask for all of that. And we also ask that you just be with the council members tonight as we go through our agenda, and to be able to make the right decisions for our citizens and for the city of Bruce Valetti, because we just need these people, Lord God. Lord, I pray for our first responders, our police department, our fire department. I pray for our city workers out there every day, heat or cold, wet or dry, they're out there trying to fix the water and trying to make sure that you have water to your homes. You never know what you're missing until you don't have it, and then you're wondering where the water is. And Lord God, I just pray that you'll just take, and take care of the employees up here at Bruce Valetti, our city. The, these, these ladies, they are working very hard to make sure that everything gets taken care of, in the court system, the secretary department, the water department. I mean, they're just, everybody's just working very, very hard, Lord, and we just pray that you will reach down and put your hands up on them, Lord, and let them know that what they are doing, they are appreciated. And that's all we ever ask. They're not doing it for a pat on the back. We just want them to know that they are appreciated. Lord God, I just want to say, and I want to also pray for our military people out there that are defending us, that are taking care of our country, because without them, Lord, oh, I don't even want to think about what this world would be without them. Lord God, I ask for all these things in the precious name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, and one invisible. You may have a seat. First of all, I want to thank Pam Combs back there. She's our city secretary, and she is retiring here by the end of the year, and so she is training Ms. Renee Flores to be our city, new city secretary. And then we have Jamie Rodriguez back there with our water department. We have Chief Michael Dorsey of the Chief of Police. We have Jean Sprout of our water department. And then we're going to come up here. And to my left, we have Councilman Wiggins and Councilman, uh, McRyer, McGur, McGrewer. And to my right, we have Councilwoman Joyce McLaughlin, and we have Councilman Prater and Councilman Just, Justin Richardson. But I always call you Justin instead of, because of the judge. You remind me of the judge. But anyway. And I just want to say thank you guys very much for being here, everyone of you. And as y'all notice, I kind of sit here in the center. I was hoping it wouldn't look real empty with our city administrator here. He is very well missed. He, oh, man. Uh, yeah, me and Pam's like, but he's very well missed. So, but he is doing good. I talk to him every day, and he's, he's, he sends his love to everybody and everything. Oh, it's too far away from me. How's that? I talk so loud, I can't believe you can't hear me. But, oh, okay. But anyway, he's, he's very well missed, and so just want to say thank you, you know, and let y'all know what he said. He just, he loves the city. He hated to do it, but circumstances come up. All right. Community announcements. Do we have any community announcements besides the, uh, she's, your daughter's not here tonight. So the first, the first Friday of November, they're having a bingo night and at, down at the Methodist Church at the family center, and it's really nice. If you have a chance to go to it, it's, you know, you're not winning no five, six thousand dollars, but you know, it's, you get to play, and the fellowship is wonderful with all of the citizens that show up, and we laugh and joke and, and aggravate each other. So, I mean, it's a good time. So if you have a chance, you ought to try it. What time does that start? Six o'clock? Yeah, 6:00 PM. And then, see, what are the announcements that I know of? Yes, okay, on which one? Oh, yeah, the Har, hometown harvest is going to be on November the fifteenth. Uh-huh. And the parade starts at nine thirty, and then when the parade ends up, it will be over here at City Hall. We're going to have all kinds of vendors, all kinds of kids' games, and just, we have, going to have cornholing over at the fire department again, and we're going to have Cow Patty Bingo, and we're going to have a big car show, motorcycles, and what, yeah, I'm going to have a chili cook-off done by the, yeah, by our Masons here in Bruce Valetti, and they're getting some more Masons. So if y'all would like to be in the chili cook-off, all you have to do is just pay the little thing fee and come up here and get in it, and they'll taste it and decide on who makes the best chili. So, and everybody is welcome to get into it. And, and as I said, all kinds of kids' games. I mean, they're, you know, and I don't know if Mr. Prater's going to have his train. He's working on it. Yeah, it's okay. He's, he's working on it. He always does that for the kids, and they enjoy riding around in it, and, you know, he, he pulls them, and they just, they have a blast. They have a blast. Yeah, yeah, they enjoy it. So, and that's what it's fun, just getting out and visiting and letting the kids do all kinds of stuff and have fun. The tickets are only, the only tickets that cost more than the dollar is the fifty-fifty and the Cow Patty Bingo, and that's it. Yeah. And the city is going to have a booth set up, and we got a two fifty-dollar gift cards that we're going to be given away to somebody that wins the drawing, and that was a donation. It's not city money. It was a donation. And it's just, then all the other tickets are a dollar, and we're going to sell the tickets. All, you know, they can buy as many as they want, or one, one or two or ten, whatever, and then they just go to wherever they want to play and give that ticket. And, and we're having auction, going to have a good auction. This year, we're going to have, uh, something donated for the auction, and that's going to be with Lance Brown. He's a fisher guide, guide. He's going to give me a trip for fishing, to take somebody fishing, and they, he guarantees them to catch fish. So that always is a good thing. He always enjoys that. And is there anything else? Oh, the Veterans Day closure for the city? Okay. It's okay. It's on Thursday? Okay. Okay, Chief? I figured you had an announcement. You might turn that mic on, sir.
Evening, Mayor and Council and Citizens. Good to see everybody. I do have a couple announcements. The first one's our third annual Blue Santa. I have some flyers out front, so. My wife made these, so. But, yeah, we're gearing up for our third annual Blue Santa. It's going to be December twentieth from six to nine at the Bruce Valetti United Methodist Church Family Life Center. And the reason it's going to be held there is because our event has grown over the past two years, and we've outgrown our room over at the police department. So we're hoping to continue to grow and get as many people on board and get them to come to our event. We are going to add a few things. We're looking at doing like a backdrop photo shoot with Santa. I have had Doug Mullis, Mullis or...
The one that done our pictures.
The gentleman that did the pictures for the city. He's volunteered to do that, do the photography, so we appreciate him. And then we're also going to have, we're looking at doing like hot chocolate and, and like ornament painting and some other activities for the kids, just have some more interactive things to do and try to just make it bigger and better every year. So I'm really looking forward to that. We already have had quite a few people sign up. They can sign up by email, or I actually created a group me page for people to join, and then they can just post, you know, what their kids are wanting for Christmas and things like that, and we'll try to, try to fulfill everything, every request that we get. The other thing I wanted to share with everyone is back in, I believe, August timeframe, we were put, the police department was put in contact with some individuals. One of them's this gentleman, this really tall gentleman in the pink shirt behind me. I thought I was tall until I met him. He's a giant. But a super nice guy. His name is Carson Walker, and his mother is Marley Walker. Carson is assistant district attorney with Bell County, and then his mother lives in the Georgetown area, but they have a passion for helping law enforcement agencies and helping keeping officers safe. And so I actually got in contact with them, and they wanted to know how they could help, and they were more than generous to us. They asked us, you know, whatever y'all need, we'll help y'all get, and we really appreciate that more than, more than they could know. But we got four rifle-rated vests with plate, front and rear plates, so two plates per vest. So we got four vests with eight plates, and then we got five ballistic helmets, and then they also helped our school district out by providing four ballistic shields for our four campuses over at the school. So I can't tell Carson and Marley how much we appreciate them, but they've been doing this for like the last five or six years, I think, and if, I can't, I don't even know the amount of agencies they've helped, but quite a few. So I just wanted to take a minute to recognize them, made up some awards for them, for Carson and, and Marley, but it's a certificate of appreciation, and it says, "This certificate is proudly presented to Carson Walker in recognition of your generous donation to the Bruce Valetti Police Department and your efforts in keeping our law enforcement officers safe." And then I have our, my signature and the mayor's signature on here, so. I'm also going to give them a patch as well, so have some patches.
Hey, Chief, I appreciate that.
I'll give you a second to say a few words if you want to, or...
Yeah. I want to thank you all for inviting me up here. As you said, I'm one of the prosecutors in Bell County. I live in Williamson County. Since about 2019, my mother and I have been reaching out to agencies in Texas who have need for ballistic armor. I don't know, you guys remember the massacre that happened in Dallas where twelve police officers were shot in 2016, and my mom did not know that a lot of our Texas law enforcement officers do not have rifle-rated armor. So she's been blessed in life, and since that mission, or since that started, we have been able to equip over three hundred and fifty Texas peace officers with rifle armor. And we're going to continue going. You know, Bruce Valetti was just one of the, you know, kind of just word of mouth, and we reach out. So if you guys know any Texas law enforcement officers that are in need of rifle-rated gear or shields or anything like that, please get with Chief and get our information, and we're looking to continue to donate for as long as we can.
Be careful out there. Y'all have a blessed evening.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there any more community announcements? Any at all? Okay. No? All right, moving right along. City, citizens' presentation. The city council welcomes public comments at this point on items not specifically listed on the agenda. Speakers must sign up before the meeting begins. Speakers are limited to five minutes each. The council cannot respond to matters not listed on the agenda until a future meeting. Do we have anybody signed up, Ms. Pam? Okay, okay, all right. Sorry about that. I didn't see it there. Mr. Weaver, okay? Thank you, sir.
Good evening, everybody. Hey, I'm Darren Weaver. I'm the chair of the Economic Development Corporation for Bruce Valetti. I'm the chair of the Economic Development Corporation for Bruce Valetti. We had a meeting some time ago. But a lot of things have happened in the meantime. I just thought I'd come up and brief you all, this mayor and honorable city council members and the public about what the EDC has been working on and, uh, and our efforts in the last month, month and a half, just so we're kinda synced on, at least you're, you're aware of what we're doing. And we're, we're trying to stay aware of what you're doing, but I don't think we're always communicating very well. Brings up a point, is if anybody up there doesn't have my phone number, let's get my phone number on your phones, you know? So, if something comes up, you might think, hey, maybe we should call the EDC and see if they're already working that issue or something. So, anyway, I want you all to have my phone number and feel free to call me on stuff. So, in, in the interim month there, on October seventh, I just wanna go over some things we've done. We met with Patsy Doody, and she's, she's got a good way forward on how we go ahead with these freeway monuments. It's basically, the next step is the design process. I think we talked about it at the budget meeting, that text dot has certain requirements. She is working those. And in the meantime, we've had a meeting with the developer and the investors who wanna develop the lot across from Eagle's Landing for a gas station, fast food. And as part of that negotiation, we, we asked them to build us a monument, more to follow, designed to follow, that would be somewhat semi-circular at the corner there and welcome people into the city. So we have the traditional bank building that's been there forever. Now we have a developer who wants to put a gas station across from that. And I, I asked during that meeting, look, it's the entrance to our town, and we'd like a little better look there. And so they were amenable to building us something there. So, so having said that, with what Patsy's working on, I think we ought to have commonality between the monuments that are gonna go on the freeway eventually and the monument that would be there. Now that's all pending you all's approval of that project when it gets to you, right? But Mr. Manton was in that meeting, mayor, I, the investors, the developers. But we made it kinda clear that we wanted to beautify that corner as people come into our town. So that was one meeting. So Ms. Doody's working on that, and she'll brief us all on what progress she's made at the next EDC meeting next month. Also met with Mr. Kilgore to discuss his intent, well, to smooth some things out, hopefully. And then also what his intent and the school board's intent was for the ball field, which is, let's, let's be honest, prime developable land. And so we talked about that a lot. And he is amenable to discussions about what could be done to the, with the, the land that is the ball field. Obviously, he has to have board approval. And, but I need to know, as the EDC chair, when someone says what is available or potentially available for purchase, I need to know what's available or potentially available. So, we discussed that. And so, when and if someone approaches me that needs that kind of footprint, at least I know that at least there's room for negotiation, right? Met with Mr. Manton, had a nice hour-long meeting with Mr. Manton before he left to coordinate efforts and, and, and share what each of us knows. Like I said, the following week, we met with that investment group. So if anybody doesn't know, the proposal is a fourteen-pump gas station on that lot that sits vacant currently where everybody's parking. They also wanna put fast food in there. The footprint of that is not very big, so I don't think it would be one of the big chains, right? Because the big chains own their restaurants, like Whataburger, right? So the footprint would be small. I presume that will get to you, but it was a nice meeting, it was a good meeting. We brought up some issues about traffic, right? 'Cause text dot won't let them cut into the curbs. They wanna come, they wanna divert their traffic on that small street, which I can't remember the name of right up here. What is that street? Evergreen? And then they wanna exit on Eagle. We brought up some concerns about that, like Eagle Drive's a small little, a small little thoroughfare. And twice a day, the school buses go up and down that thing, and it's gonna be a mess. So they, they promised to rework that whole traffic plan and stuff. But it was a good productive meeting. I encourage, encourage them to get with you guys and then whoever you select for the next city manager to work that development out. I wanna commend you all for, for beautifying the city signage there, up there on the corner of Eagle Drive. And the mayor and I talked about that before the meeting. But I just wanna make sure that we're all kind of on the same common operating picture that, that more, more substantial structural signage is coming and monuments are coming. So, you know, if, if you need some EDC help with, 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 with monies to beautify and make things good for the time being, fine. But let's just make sure that we're both boards coordinating our efforts. Because we are working those deals on the side there. I did review the promotional material that we've been talking about. I didn't like it. I liked the concept, but it wasn't splashy enough for me. And so I had the designers start reworking it. So, but I am on it, but I'm just not gonna accept the bland product, and that's what I was seeing. Like I said, we're working the monument issues. At the next EDC board meeting, we are gonna reprioritize priorities. We did that a year, year and a half ago. Think we need to revisit it, what are the priorities? I encourage members of the council and mayor to, you know, let us know what your priorities are versus the priorities we had a year and a half ago. And then let's restack them and prioritize. Right now, the priority, priority for us are these highway promotional monuments. But if we need to reprioritize stuff, like I'd be more than willing, like Hewitt did, to improve roads. But we're not in a position as a city for us to even talk about that until Black Rock does their stuff, right? But I mean, I'm, we're always open to stuff, but if, but if you have a priority that's not our priority, then we need to talk about it and reprioritize. So, also looking at a plan to, a comprehensive plan that probably I'll, I'll ask one of the board members to take on to improve Third Street and Market Street from a more, to a more business-friendly area of the town. And, and briefly, what I'm gonna ask them to work on is sidewalks, parking stripes, crosswalks, where are traffic lights gonna go and all that. And then I, I can't ever be at this podium without saying that I still think we need to review and redo the comprehensive city plan. Okay, all right? We have a board member vacancy, I'll end with this. Mr. Tolbert has resigned, God bless him, and I know he's dealing with some stuff. And there have been candidates that have put in applications to replace him. And I encourage you, please, to look at those candidates and vote on that, hopefully before the next EDC meeting, mid-month, next month. With that, that's what your Economic Development Corporation's been doing in the last month, so thank you. I'll be available after the meeting for questions, if you wanna talk about anything.
Yes, sir, all right. All right, okay, do we have anybody else signed up to speak? Okay, not at this time. Okay, at this time, instead of going to number four, we are going to do our executive session. Number fourteen, it's gonna be moved up because, due to somebody that needs to be busy after this. So, but anyway, the executive session, the city council shall meet in executive session to discuss the following. City secretary, Texas Government Code Section 551.074, personal matters. Sergeant, patrol officer, and school resource officer, Texas Government Code Section 551.074, personal matter. So it is now six twenty-five, and our regular council meeting is closed. And we are, be back just as soon as this is over.
Okay, it is now six forty-seven and our executive session is over and our regular council meeting has come back to order. So, let me get here to my paperwork, okay. Reconvene to open session, possible action or issue discussion of executive session. Does anybody have anything on that, Mr. Wiggins, or we just want to do no, no action taken over this stuff?
No action required.
Okay, all in favor? We'll go ahead and take a vote on it, just be on the safe side unanimous, thank you ladies and gentlemen. Okay, now we're going to go back to our regular stuff and we're going to go to number, they're all my papers are just backwards here, we're going to number four. Citizens request for consideration, Thomas Arnold, counsel to discuss and consider and potentially take action on a request for a permit at, for two thirty-eight Melissa Street, residency within a recreational vehicle while permanent home is under construction. Mr. Arnold?
Oh, thank you, sorry I was late, I was sort of a person.
No, I'm sorry, that's okay.
So, Mr. Allen was asking that, I currently have two records.
Can you turn your mic on, sir? Sorry. And the reason he's dressed in his wannna scream, he is in a haunted house until Halloween's over, so, works every night in a haunted house.
It's silo screams.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I was actually under the impression a little birdie told me that, no, it's now, so I ran up here. So basically while I'm building my house, I'm asking that, that I can stay in my RV, and my sister can stay in an RV while we're under construction.
I can't make, ask a question. I, I can say, have you applied for your building permit yet?
I haven't applied for the actual building permit, I've gotten the electrical permit and I've gotten electricity out there. I've put down a foundation plat for the RVs and our next topic will be my, my fence permit that I've applied for.
But the first part of it's for permission.
Yes, if, if allowed to, then I see within the next month or so me applying for the building permit.
How long?
Mr. Prater?
How long are you looking on your construction of your new house?
Six to nine months.
Six to nine months. And the, the permit would be for one hundred and eighty days, I believe we give you to stay in here. So that'd be six months.
Yeah, and then you always have for an extension. Yeah, always extra extension. Okay, anybody else, Mr. Wiggins?
Yep, how, how long have you and others been living in RVs on your property?
For a couple of months now.
Couple of months?
Several months.
Oh, several months.
I've been out there personally, I want to say for three months, maybe longer, I don't know. It's been a while, it's been one kick in the face after another since I've been out there.
Okay, how, how many RVs do you have and how many people living in them?
I have two RVs that people are living in, I have a motor home and another RV that is unoccupied. And, long story short, I bought those to complete the others. So, one of them has been moved out of sight, hopefully out of mind, and the other one I've lost the key for, so as soon as I find the key, I'll figure out what I'm going to do with it. But it is not being lived in. Currently it is me, Anita Sellers, my sister, and Billy Timberlake, a friend of my late father's.
And you said of four RVs?
There are four recreational vehicles, two are being occupied.
Yeah, okay, okay, well, prior to you putting RVs on your property, and currently, is there any occupied re- permanent residence that exists on that property?
Say that again?
Prior to you putting your RVs on the property? In other words, when you moved on that property, was it just a piece of vacant land?
Yes.
So there was never no, no permanent residence on that land?
No, sir.
Okay.
I've, I've got the water meter and I've got an electric meter and I'm slowly but surely moving forward, I was living out at the RV park.
Right.
But the RV park bill and the land bill and several other bills got to be too much, so I moved out to, I have put my trailers out on our, out on the land already and to make peace with the city, I'm asking that y'all allow me to stay out there while I'm building my house.
Okay. You know, at this, did you, oh, did you ever get permission from the, you ever come to this, when you first moved out there? Because, I mean, as you know, it's against our city ordinance to live in RV, within the city limits. I mean, you're aware of that, right?
I am aware of that.
Okay, all right, so did you, and, and actually our ordinance only allows for, to live in it if there is a permanent residence. Let me just read this to you, it's a section hidden in here that says that such recreational, "It shall be unlawful for any person to install, locate, or place any recreational vehicle or travel trailer on any lot or parcel of land within the city with the intent that any person shall reside in or occupy such recreational vehicle or travel trailer, provided that it shall be a defense to this paragraph." B, that's, that such recreational vehicle or travel trailer is located on a lot or parcel on which an occupied primary residence exists. And, and, and such recreational vehicle or travel trailer is located temporarily, temporarily for use by guests or members of the household of the owner of the occupant of the primary residence and the temporary occupancy doesn't exceed sixty consecutive days in calendar year. So when we wrote this, it was like, if you wanted to, let's say you wanted to rebuild your house that you already had on your property, permanent residence there, and you wanted to rebuild it, so you need to move out of it and live in your travel trailer, that was what this was for. It wasn't for, like, you just got a piece of raw land and now you're going to put your travel trailer out there and you're going to live in it until you get something built. So I don't, unless somebody else, councilman McGrewer here sees anything different, I don't see anything that allows us to do that. But first off, I mean, did you ever get permission from the city administrator when you first moved out there, the chief of police, or anyone else to live in those RVs on that property when you first moved them out there?
If I got permission from somebody, I wouldn't be here now. I didn't get permission from anybody, I'm asking you now, this is me asking for permission.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Okay, Mr. Prater, you have a question?
Do you already have a pad out there for your?
I have a gravel pad.
I thought you.
Yeah. I built the pad, basically it's about a sixty by sixty. It's set up to hold the travel trailers, it's, will eventually be hooked up and connected, even while, even after I build the house, the, the RVs will be maintained. If you own an RV, you have to have electricity to it. If you let Texas weather take it over, it's, it's going to fall apart. If you let Texas weather take it over, it's, it's gonna fall apart.
Is that where your house is going, is where the electricity is now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We, we allowed that couple out there in Shady Shores.
Yes, sir.
They, they live in their travel trailer and that land didn't have a house on it to begin with.
Yes, that's true.
It didn't have no house?
No, there, there wasn't a house. They moved out of their house.
Yeah.
That was some land that was unop, uh,
Unop, yeah.
That, that hadn't been, uh,
Wasn't that land attached to it? I mean, they, they were splitting that land up.
We separated that land, yeah.
Yeah, they were separating that land, but they still owned it at the time. They had never sold it.
We, we separated it first.
Yeah.
Yeah, we separated it first because they was gonna sell that to pay for the house that they was building on the other land. But, I mean, we have allowed it
Yeah, we have.
For, for that situation. Just saying, I'm just one-fifth of a vote, but, I mean, we have allowed it before.
Any, any other questions? Mr. Richardson?
So, Mr. Arnold, so far as how you, long you been there, you were residing there when the first citation was issued, and I believe it was May?
I just moved out there.
Just moved out there, okay. And so far as building your house, you estimate six to nine months. Do you have the materials or the means or loan or anything to follow through with that estimate?
I have several things in place, but I'm also working on the VA loan. Originally, it was gonna be me and my father, but as y'all are well aware, my father's passed away, so now I'm having to do it solo. So, we're reworking the application and to get the APR that I want, I have to raise my credit score ten points. I've raised it six, so, I'm on the way. And then as soon as that goes through, then my VA loan will go, will go through and I'll be easy peasy.
Do you have an estimate on how long that VA loan process takes? I mean, if you don't know, you don't know. I, I don't know is why I'm asking.
The VA process, whereas where, as far as where I'm at in the VA process, as far as the loan goes, once I get my credit score to a certain spot,
Yeah.
as soon as I get my credit score to that spot, then they reapply for it. And the way Matt is talking to me is I'm a for sure thing. So, basically, I could get a loan now with really crappy APR.
Yeah.
But if I raise my score to where they want it, then I can get decent APR.
And you said you had a couple of other things in place, like if, say hypothetically, cause if we, like, so far as starting construction, you say, like, if you don't get the VA loan, will you still be able to start construction or not?
Yes.
Yes, you will, okay.
I, I, I am a construction man. I've got more time than I got money. So, I'm currently out there working on the, the land as far as development goes, putting in a street or driveway, not, not an actual street for y'all, driveway for me. And, I mean, I'm planting hedges and I'm, I'm working the land. I've put in a trench to let water run off of that, it used to flood back there. So, I've slowly but surely been developing the land to suit me in a, in a house.
Yeah.
And I've got plans are, not written in rock or, or anything yet, but my adopted father, who lives currently in Kansas, is, we're talking about him moving down here now in a couple of years, but hopefully the house will be built by then. So, I'm thinking six to nine months, the main part of the house will be built and I'll be living in that.
Cause I guess, I guess the bottom line question I'm asking, given your, given your answer on this, is if we were to grant you this hundred and eighty day permit, that you actually will have work done, and this is not just in six months, we're having this same conversation, we're getting this, I know life happens, I'm not saying I, I don't understand that.
I, I understand what you're asking and I, and I appreciate you. Lord willing and the creek don't rise, I'll have it built. If it doesn't, and I have to come back, I'll move back out to the RV park. I, I just need y'all to give me a break and let life quick kicking me in the face.
I have, I have a question, but you will be showing progress within that length of time? And also, you said that the VA said you was a shoe-in. After, are you a disabled vet, because I know that's the only way.
I am.
Oh, okay, alright, well, on shoe-ins, that's the only way. Okay, yes, sir, Mr. Wiggins?
This question for Pam. Pam, when, if somebody comes in the city and they wanna build a house on a lot, what steps do they have to go through?
They have to fill out a,
Could you use the mic, please?
They have to fill out an application, they have to show me a site plan of where they're gonna put the house and the setbacks, they have to have an engineer report for their foundation, they have to have a energy report for their installation, and they've gotta have all the, basically, an engineer drawing of, of the floor plan.
Do they have to have like a blueprint?
Blueprint, yes, I have to have that.
So, in other words, before somebody builds a house on a lot, we need to see what kinda house that's gonna be, it's gonna fit in and make sure it's just not a lean-to here.
Right.
Has he done any of this?
No, I haven't received anything.
Is that part of the building permit, though, isn't it?
Yes.
Yes, it's, also, you have to show where all your electricity and everything's running in the house, everything. It's basically an engineer floor plan and everything, telling everything on it.
Yeah.
Okay, yes, Mr. Wiggins. Mr. Wiggins?
Let me give a couple of things, understood, you had got it on. You haven't filed any paperwork with the city yet, at all?
For building the house?
For building the house, no.
I have filed, I got an electrical permit to get the electricity out there. Basically, so I can build.
Okay.
Basically, run power tools, et cetera, et cetera. Now, I'm on the cusp of going through with the building permit and giving Pam all that she's asking for. The only thing I haven't done is the architectural foundation.
Do you have, do you have the designs for the house?
I do.
And they're, were done by an engineer?
They were not.
Okay, so they weren't stamped or anything like that?
They weren't, but I can have them, I can have an engineer look over my actual drawings and I promise you they are to code and, and they will, I will get them stamped.
Okay.
The foundation I haven't done yet, the energy report I've run, and I've gone to Texas A&amp;M website and I've, I've worked that, like I said. I've, I've done most of this stuff myself, so it's, it's slow, but it's moving.
So, you're, you're actually in the beginning stages of this. You're, you really, this is something you wanna do, you laid a pad for a house that you envisioned.
Now, the pad is, that I have built is not for the house.
It's for the,
It's for the RVs.
So, you can move the RVs and stay on the RVs?
It is, it is going to be where the RVs are parked year-round. And when I, if I take my RV somewhere for a trip, when I come back, it'll park it right back where it was.
Okay.
RVs are gonna be parked on that pad, no matter what.
No matter what, okay.
It's just like the pad on Ashley, just like the, just like your garage, except yours is enclosed, which is better. But it's, it's just a, a spot that I've picked out on my five point nine one acres and put gravel and rock and, and leveled it out and made it look pretty and center-block so that I can park RVs on it. And then next to, and slightly away from, will be where I build a house.
Do you, you don't have a plat for that, you haven't?
Say again?
You haven't prepared anything that's gonna?
I haven't done any development towards building a house because I haven't applied for my building permit yet.
Okay.
All I've worked on is the pad and I'm currently working on the driveway.
Okay.
Mr. Prater, you have a question?
Is this gonna be a concrete foundation or pier and beam?
Pier and beam.
Pier and beam, is it, is it still required by engineer for a pier and beam? It is, okay.
Yeah, the, the, the foundation is required for an engineer stamp.
Even up pier and beam?
Yes, sir.
Alright.
And I, I know all these steps.
Yeah.
But you also know that you needed to come see before you put it out there, so, that's, I mean,
I, I know the intent of the law.
Yeah.
And,
I know you're kinda asking for forgiveness.
We've talked about that a couple of times.
I know the letter of the law too. And I'm hoping you look at the intent for me of the law. I'm not gonna live in my RVs for the rest of my life, that's not my plan. I, I, and I'm only moved out there because my wallet got short, okay? Otherwise, like I said, I lived for a year out at the actual RV park. So, I had some friends camping out, out there, things got stupid. I moved out there, got it under control and cleaned up, started cleaning up the place. And things are, from my point of view, looking better. I am trying to do the best I can.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions, Mr. Wiggins? Wiggins?
Yeah, well, you know, I mean, I, I understand you're going through hard times, I understand that. And I have empathy for that. And, but, you know, again, you, you moved out there knowing that you weren't supposed to, and you did. And you didn't say nothing to anybody up here at the time, as far as I know. And you didn't come to us, I mean, you've been there for quite some time, actually. And you didn't come to us before and, you know, kinda tell us your story here. I mean, I, you know, there's steps you gotta go through, like Pam said, and, and it sounds like you hadn't been through them. And, but still, I'm not a hard-nosed and, and I wouldn't mind giving you that six months, but I'm gonna tell you this, if six months down the road, if we're still here and you hadn't came and got the necessary requirements, done the necessary requirements, then I'm probably not gonna give you another six months. I, I just wanna make you aware of that, I mean, I, I,
I don't blame you.
Yeah, I mean, and, and you're telling us, you told us that you're gonna have it done or you're gonna be moved out, is what you said, yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, so, with that said, I mean, you know, you know, we need to have a little, little heart and, and he's going through hard times and, and let's give him the hundred and eighty days and make sure that you get things done like you should. And then, if after a hundred and eighty days you can't, can't, then we'll address it again, I guess.
Alright, okay, Mr. Richardson?
So, this is more, does not, for Mr. Arnold necessarily, it's more as a counsel. So, we already have multiple citations on this property. So, if we go and grant this six, six months extension, are we also going to grant to where we're going to hold, hold off on code enforcement, that process? Because, I mean, I don't see us doing one without the other.
Right, yeah, if, okay, in, in order for the, what the city should do, I mean, this is personal opinion with, I've been doing some checking on it. If he is granted this six months, or a hundred and eighty days, whether that is, then we can, our, we can stop, what is it, what's it called? It's a stop cease on,
Cease and desist.
Yeah, of, of getting more of them, on the same, same offense.
But it's, the, the ones that's there will stay. Now, we're not gonna lift the ones that's there.
The ones that are there stays.
Yeah.
There'll just be no more tickets given on it.
Is, is that what you're talking about, Councilman Richardson? Or you talking about wanting to do away with all the ones that you got before?
That's for, that's for the judge to decide.
That's kinda what I'm asking if, what we're, what we're looking at doing with those. Cause it may, to me, it makes no sense to give him a six-month permit and we're still ticketing every day, every two, however.
Yeah, no, I agree.
The tickets can be froze.
But not the ones prior to this.
Right, that's, that's for the judge.
Yeah, that's for him and whatever.
Well, I think, I think if you grant this,
Yeah.
the purpose for the citation, or the basis of the citation disappears because you have now granted for a six-month period, an exemption from that rule that you'd be writing the violation for. So, you can't grant somebody an exemption and turn around and cite them for the same,
I'm just making sure we're clear on that, cause I don't wanna act like we're giving somebody something and then turn around and be hosing them on the other end of that.
No, but I don't, I don't wanna, I don't wanna, I don't wanna do away with any of the prior citations either by doing this.
I'm good with that, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Alright, because, I mean, Mr. Arnold got a citation for something, okay? Because that's coming up next, but I can't, I'm not saying, well, he got a citation for something, got tickets for it, but then he applied for that and it has been approved. He just hasn't picked it up yet, so I froze it where it was at, not taking away from what's already been charged, but he's just not gonna get no more tickets for that. So, I mean, that's basically what you're saying, that's what I done, yeah.
As we're speaking right now about the recreational vehicle, okay? You can't write a citation because you don't have a law now, in his particular circumstance, to cover writing that citation. You've said for a hundred and eighty days, that law does not apply to him, okay? And he comes, he has to come back if it's necessary to get something additional. So, legally, we couldn't write him a citation even if he wanted to, okay?
It'd just be froze, but you still have the old certificate.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm just making sure we're clear on that.
Alright, so, do we have a, yes, ma'am?
I have one question. You mentioned you and your sister both, are you, are you trying to get a permit or us to allow two RVs for two people? For two, two occupied RVs?
Correct.
Out, not just one?
Correct.
Not just you, but it would be two?
Correct.
Or him, or you and your sister?
Okay, I, cause I wasn't clear on that, if it was you and your sister in one or two?
Bill and I are in one and my sister's in another.
Okay, okay.
Alright, do we have a motion, Mr. Wiggins?
Yeah, okay, I'll, I'll make the motion to, to grant to Mr. Arnold, the property owner, an extended use permit for a hundred and eighty consecutive days.
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Prater, second that, all in favor? Ananamous, okay, Mr. Arnold, you have a hundred and eighty days and you need to, so, between those hundred and eighty days, you're gonna have to show us some type of improvement on a building, with your building permit, okay? Alright?
I just want some,
Not just some type.
Yeah, and now, so now you wanna, he has another thing, but yes, Mr. Richardson?
I just wanna clarify kinda at least my thoughts on the improvement. I don't wanna, like, the bare minimum, like, a few boards nailed together is not improvement in my book. That, is that, that makes sense?
Wait, how is rock, Ian?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We see a wall, something.
Rock's already there. I understand what you're saying, you want me to, you wanna see a house.
Yeah, or, or something that's looking like it's going to be that house, not just the foundation, okay?
Let's, let's put some language in there that says,
Okay, let's put some language in.
There should be substantial performance towards the building of a house. And that would be part of this motion.
Within a hundred and eighty days.
Motion, you have a mic?
It's a, yeah, it's an amendment to the motion, just to include that language, that during that hundred and eighty days, there should be substantial performance towards the building of a house. That, that then precludes you for, or anyone from bringing in some rocks and saying, well, I put in a sidewalk.
Okay, alright, did y'all get that back there?
Yeah, I'll, I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor? Ananamous, did you get that, Pam, what to include that? Okay, she got it, alright.
And is that, is that agreeable to you, Mr. Arnold?
Yes, that's, that's what I was thinking anyway.
So, we have this conversation six months, we don't have to,
I'm not, I'm not, I've got common sense. You know, that's one of the few things that I do have. So, I understand you wanna see a house. You don't want me to just have some sticks standing up and some rocks in a pile and,
Exactly.
and me saying, oh, I'm working on it.
Well, I mean, I've dealt, I deal with kinda the lowest common denominator in my job, so I mean, I kinda, I'm not, I'm not accusing you of being that, I just get used to kinda making sure we're a hundred percent clear on everything. I'm not accusing you of being that, I just get used to kinda making sure we're a hundred percent clear on everything.
I understand.
Alright, okay, you wanna go with your next, uh, stuff, you had two things on the agenda.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay?
Number five?
Okay, uh, number five, a citizen's request for consideration, Thomas Arnold, council discussed, considering, and propose take action on fence permit fee, okay? Uh, what, I'm gonna, on this thing here, uh, I will say a little bit about this, 'cause if this, what can't we do, we're doing a little flight show over here, and I can show you, but I have no idea how to do that stuff, okay? So, anyway, I'm thinking, uh, he has, he applied for a fence permit, and, uh, the fence permit wasn't properly what the, uh, Veritas wanted, so Pam helped regenerate it, redo it, and send it in, and then, uh, so the per, he went ahead and put the, started putting the fence up before he got the permit, so now, you can tell us why.
Why did I put the fence up?
Yeah, why, yeah, tell us why you put the fence up without the permit.
It did take a long time for the permit, the fence permit to be, uh... To come back to City Hall and say, okay, I can come up and pay for it. Um, I started, I had to actually get Councilman Prager's help to get my electrical permit. Uh, when I applied for it, it took almost two weeks before, um, Councilman Prager finally stepped in and helped. Why? I don't know, and I'm not accusing anybody of anything, but I turned in all the paperwork. And three months later, when I finally, you know, where's my permit, uh, or it finally comes in, I'm getting double fee, and that's basically why, what I'm asking for is to not double fee me, let me pay the regular price of the permit, because I applied for it. I did not have to bring in or do anything extra to get the permit passed. That's my only real argument, is time, why? I don't know. All I know is that, yeah, a week or two weeks later, I finally got my electrical permit, so I started working out there to, towards the electricity, and in order to be safe and secured, I started putting up the fence. So, three months later, when I finally step in and say, where's my permit? Because I got a ticket for it, I didn't have to bring any more paperwork to City Hall. I didn't have to do anything other than call up here and say, where's my permit? Why isn't it here? Why am I getting a ticket for something that I have not had to do anything else for?
Okay.
Do you know why you, why did you go ahead and start the fence pri- for it, to begin with?
For security and safety of my dogs.
Your dogs, okay.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Prater?
What was the, what was the date that you applied for that permit, and what date did you get it?
Unfortunately, Mr. Prager, I, I don't know the exact dates.
Pam?
I don't know the date, so I have to file a folder.
But it took about, what, two months?
Three.
Three months, okay.
So you filed for the permit, and three months later, you still haven't received it?
Three months later, I was finally told, the permit is here and ready for you. But when they told me the price, I was being double fee because I had already put up the fence.
Well, in other construction, uh, we, when I worked construction, we would call in locates, to come out and locate underground utilities. Uh, they had a certain amount of days to do that, they couldn't stop construction from going forward because they couldn't get out there and locate a line. We was allowed to go out there and dig because them people didn't do what they were supposed to do. Uh, I think this kinda falls in that area, that...
If, if I would've had to bring more paperwork up, or if I would've had to do something on my end,
That's different.
Then I would understand being double permitted, double fee, because I dropped the ball. But in this particular case, I didn't drop the ball. Alright, all I had to do was make some phone calls and kick the hornet's nest.
So?
I got, yes, ma'am, I got a couple questions.
Okay.
So, what's, I don't, I don't, I move, I don't really know the permit, what's our, can you give me just a general timeline for about what our permit process, usually the turnaround is?
Okay, well, used to, on fences and, uh, fences and storage buildings and things like that, it didn't take long at all, because we could go out there, we would measure it, we would check with eight, uh, what is it? Uh, one-eight-eight, or the, you know, make sure there wasn't any gas lines, or electrical lines, or anything, utility lines under, and then, uh, find out where their, if they had it surveyed, we'd look at their stakes, we could measure it ourselves, and we lost the code enforcing, and then it was turned over to the police department, well, that's just a lot of work to do, and then, so Ken had made a statement to, for Pam, that she needed to go to do this, well, she couldn't do it, and, you know, 'cause she's the one that writes permits, and she couldn't, it was hard for her to do, so she turned everything over to Veritas, and it just takes them forever, and trust me, I know, 'cause they took forever to get me my permit. But, I mean, just for a fence, a short fence, but then, and they, a lot of citizens have complained about this because it takes too long to get a fence permit, and they only have so many days to get it up, you know, 'cause they've gotta pay somebody to do it. So, you know, the little things like that, it just takes Veritas, now, they're not expensive, I mean, you know, there's just so much afoot. Now, mine, I think the minimum was eighty-five dollars for me, okay? Because I, you know, and I was about ready to put mine up, and Ken said, Linda, it's gonna be double, it's gonna be double. And I go, yeah, but these people are charging me every day, you know, but then I finally come through, but it took them forever. But they have to make, they have to go, they go by a plan that you turn in, okay? And then they go to the, the McLennan County CAD, and then they sit up there in their office, and they look at the McLennan County CAD, and they go this here, and then they look at your paperwork that you gave them, and if it don't match exactly like that, uh, McLennan County CAD, then they don't do anything, they say, well, we need more stuff.
Right.
You know, so it is, you know, for the small stuff, now, they are very good about all the big stuff, the electricals, the plumbing, the buildings, and, I mean, you know, but the small stuff, it does take them forever.
Okay.
You know, so, but, you know, yeah, it just takes them forever.
Okay, thank you.
You know, we just didn't have the manpower to do it, and Ms. Pam, she didn't be, get, need to be getting out there and measuring things.
Yeah.
You know, so, and Ms. Pam, you wanna say something about that?
Yes, on these fences, if you don't put exactly what Bureau of Veritas wants, uh, description, they're gonna kick it back, and they're gonna say, I need this and this. Well, that's what happened to Linda's, that's what happened to, um, Thomas's. So myself, I took it upon myself to draw it out, and show where everything was at, and once I did the drawing, then they passed it. But it did get kicked, kicked back because of the drawing.
Is, is that your job to do that drawing?
No, but I was trying to get it passed.
Okay.
She was trying, she's trying to hip out, she was trying to hip out.
I like Graham.
Yeah, Mr. Graham?
One of the issues just here is, he made the effort to put in for the permit.
Electrical.
He jumped the gun, I know how that feels, 'cause I paid double on my fence, okay? Because I put my fence up, and the difference between him and I is I put my fence up and I came down here and said, I need a permit for my fence, okay? Well, then I had to pay double on my fence, you know, uh, I knew better, okay? In his particular case, he put in the permit, okay? Then he started construction on his fence. Now, the issue is Veritas coming back and making it so he can, actually, the permit comes from Veritas, or it's approved by Veritas, so he started the steps, and I think there ought to be some consideration there for starting the steps.
Mr. Wiggins?
Okay, one, uh, maybe I'm confused here, but when you, when you put it, you put in for your electrical permit first, is that right?
I, I basically turned them, I turned in the paperwork for my electrical permit and the paperwork for my fence, not the actual application for my fence on...
The same time, same day?
On a day, and then two days later, I, I realized I hadn't turned in the actual application, so I came back up here and turned that in. So my, my fence paperwork was with my electrical paperwork, and all Veritas had to do was get their head out of their butt, and...
Excuse me, sir?
Right.
Take the paperwork, put it with the application, oh, okay, got it.
But, but I guess it's, evidently, it's something because of the drawing, according to what Pam said, on the fence.
The drawing was in the electrical permit, that's what I'm trying to tell you.
I guess for the fence, was that the drawing for the fence, or, or what, Pam?
The drawing on the, for the fence was on the electrical application, electrical permit application.
Oh, so you had to correct that and take it off the electric?
I said that went off after Thomas called me and said, I have the drawings and about that, so I sent that one off.
Okay, I got you.
And they came back and said that it wasn't adequate enough for them to approve it.
Okay.
So that's, that's when I said, okay, let, I'm gonna draw it myself, so that's what I did, I draw through the driveway, I showed everything.
Okay.
And then, and once I did it, the man approved it.
Yeah, but he, but he turned it in, uh, just right after he turned in his electrical permit, request.
I have to leave the, I have to draw the exact dates on that.
Yeah, well, I mean, that's what he's saying.
No, I mean, if the drawing was on the other one, it was not on the one.
Alright, any other questions, or anybody wanna make a motion?
Got one in the audience.
Okay, yes, ma'am?
I, I just have a question for Pam. Do the clients know when they apply for this fence permit, that if they start building before the permit comes back, before they're issued the actual permit, are they informed, or is it on that form that says you're gonna get double billed, or double fee, or whatever?
Uh, I...
Do they, do they know?
It's not on the form.
It's in our ordinances that you do get double billed, but I tell them not to install anything, or don't do anything for at least seven to ten business days, and usually that's when the permit comes back. Not unless there's an issue with the permit, then it takes longer to get it back, because that's, uh... I like my permit, that it, I have to break some construction.
Mr. Prater, you had another question?
Uh, when the, uh, how long did it?
Stick your head down there.
Excuse me, Sharon.
Uh, how long did it come back, where they said they needed the, the map?
I, I wouldn't know, I'd have to look and see on my emails, 'cause I printed an email.
Because, I mean, that's a, that's a pretty good stretch, three months is a pretty good stretch.
I...
I mean, you were thinking about ten business days, they would've said, hey, uh, we don't have a map to this. Did you inform, uh, Mr. Arnold that they needed the map?
Thomas called back and talked to me and told me that the drawing was on the other plan.
And did you tell them, Veritas?
And I sent that to them, but it came back voiding, that I had to get another one. So that's the reason I took it for myself, to take a print picture of the map, draw it all out, and send it in.
Okay, did...
And for that time, when I did it, it probably took seven to ten business days.
Okay, did you tell Mr. Arnold that you was gonna write, you was gonna do the map and send it in?
I can't remember if I told him that I was gonna draw, but I, I thought I told him that I'd sent something in, but I'm not talking about that.
Okay.
I, I can see your fault on both sides.
Okay, I, I think going forward, I think we need to put this language about the permit required and fees required, we need to put that on the, on the form that they fill out, and that way it spells it out, that, uh, that what all's required, and they have to be, and it must be paid before the work commences, and about the fees shall be doubled for any permit for which work began before the fees were paid, and so on and so forth. Let's put that on that, on those, uh... The forms, yeah, and that way it's spelled out clear, and then maybe we won't go through this again. If they don't look at it, then it's their fault. But, it, you know, with that said, you know, I'll, I'll just make the motion not to double his fee.
I'll second.
Oh, okay, Joyce seconded it, all in favor?
Yeah.
Ananamous, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, good, thank you, Mr. Arnold.
Thank you, counsel.
Looking forward to see that showing. See them walls going up.
Alright, moving right on. Yes.
I said, I'm ready to see them walls go up.
Was there, was there a timeframe for the payment?
Number five, citizen's request for, oh, we already done that, number six. Oh, yes, ma'am?
Well, Mr. Arnold is left, I'm sorry, I was wondering if there was a payment, um, date, a timeframe?
Oh, I'll get ahold of him, I'll call him tomorrow and tell him he needs to bring a payment in quick.
Okay.
To pick up his permit, 'cause it's up, sitting up there in the, in the front.
Okay.
Okay, as a matter of fact, I can text you.
Oh, yeah, we need to get that, he needs to get that paid.
Yeah, he needs to get that paid, alright, yes, ma'am?
Is this something going forward that we're gonna change ordinance?
No, we don't need to change the ordinance.
Well, the ordinance says it's doubled.
Yeah, the ordinance is.
They just want, they just want the ordinance part of it put on the...
Right, understand that, but since, you just voted for him not to pay double, I need to know, is this something that's fixing to change?
Yeah, we need to pull those forms in.
No, no, the reason, the reason, the reason I made that motion was because due to the circumstances that he stated, I feel like that he already filled, filled both forms out for the electrical and the fence, and, and then due to Veritas' delay, well, he decided to go ahead, he took it upon himself to go ahead and start that fence without being paid for, the permit being paid for, so he is in the wrong there, but I don't think we ought to double bill him for that, yeah. But going forward, I think, 'cause it's, it needs to be on the form, and that way it's spelled out, and then maybe we can mitigate this.
Alright, Cheek, you have a, you have a question, Cheek?
Councilman Richardson can go first.
Hi, Cheek, go ahead.
One of you officers?
I was just gonna, just, I guess, put on the record that, you know, he, he did receive a citation for no permit, and I'll go ahead, tomorrow I can draft a letter for that to be dismissed, for that violation.
For that one violation, yes, sir.
So.
Just that one, thank you, Cheek.
So, I just, kinda, for our other citizens, everything, like, can we look at possibly adding an agenda item to next month's meeting about this, if this is, you said you've received multiple complaints, can either our city manager wanna get another, our city administrator wanna get a new one, or talk about the next meeting, let's address that gap so we're not having this issue with other people as well?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, we need to pull the forms we have now, and maybe re, and put that in there somehow, put it on that form.
Well, that's kind of a discussion for another time, I guess, but, you know, like, let's look at having that discussion.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, okay, alright, alright, number six, uh, open, okay, it is... Uh, next one is the open public hearing, zoning change for residential district to general business district, one-six-eight-seven-oh, South IH thirty-five, Bruceville, Eddie, Texas. Council to hear public comments pertaining to an owner agent initialized zoning change on property located at sixteen-eight-seventy, South IH thirty-five, Bruceville, Texas, seven-six-six-three-oh, containing one-point-three-oh-five acres, and further described as being located within the city limits of Bruceville-Eddie and on the corner of Woodlawn Road and S-South IH thirty-five, Frontage Road, and it is now seven-twenty-five, and this public hearing is now open. Okay, uh, do we have any, anything, the citizens wanna say anything about this? It's an open thing, and it's up to y'all, we don't, we can't answer it or ask any questions.
Just curio- curiosity for that.
You can come up to the mic, sir, and you can talk all you want to about it, we'll, we'll sit and listen.
Yeah, if you don't come up to the mic, the, the recorder doesn't pick it up.
Just a question, is that the property that used to be a big, old, red farmhouse, and they tore it down recently? Okay, that's all I wanna know, thank you.
Alright, anybody else have any questions? Okay, it is seven-thirty-six, and the, uh, open, uh, public hearing is now closed, and seven-thirty-six, and, uh, we're gonna go to, now it says closing of the zoning, and, and number eight, zoning changes from resident district to general business district to one-six-eight-seven-oh, South IH thirty-five, Bruceville-Eddie, Texas, seven-six-six-three-oh. Council to discuss, considering, probably take action to approve ordinance O-ten-dash-two-three-dash-two-oh-two-five-dash-one, changing the zoning classification on property located at one-six-eight-seven-oh, South IH thirty-five, Bruceville, Texas, seven-six-six-three-oh, containing one-point-three-five, uh, oh, acres, and further, go to my next page. Describe as being located within the city limits of Bruceville-Eddie, corner of Woodlawn Road and S-South IH thirty-five, Frontage Road, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Bruceville-Eddie, McLennan County, Texas, to rightly ref... to rightly reflect said changes, okay? Now we can go, Mr. Wiggins.
I'm, I'm making a motion to approve ordinance number O. ten dash twenty-three dash twenty twenty-five dash one, changing the zoning from its zoning classification, classi- classification of single-family dwelling district one to general business district.
I'll second. Joyce seconded it, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, okay. Number nine, uh, preliminary plat lots one and two, block one of Archie Lane additions. Counsel to discuss, consider and probably take action on a preliminary plat for property owned by Doris Ann Stewart being lots one and two, block one of Archie Lane addition to McLennan County, Texas, recording in the volume six seven oh, page one seven one of the deed records of McLennan County and totaling one point nine eight nine acres, further described as two oh one Archie Lane, Bruceville-Eddie, Texas, seven six six three oh, okay? Questions, anybody wanna talk about it? Okay, yes sir.
So I also wanna, like, just make sure, this is not gonna, by splitting this up and everything, that's not gonna affect available water meters or anything like that, correct?
I don't, they're splitting that plat up?
They already have water meters.
Both lots.
Yeah, both lots already.
Yeah.
Too easy, that's all I have.
All right, yeah, the water meters are already out there.
Yeah, I think they just wanna split their land because they inherited it or something.
Yeah. Yeah.
I, I don't have any problem with it.
Anybody have a motion then?
I'll make a motion that will approve it.
Okay. Prater made a motion.
I'll second it.
And we have a second. Okay, Mr. Graham seconded it, okay, number ten.
We need a vote.
Oh, all in favor? Sorry about that, unanimous, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Okay, number ten, variance request for approval of two lot plats subdivisions located at two oh one Archie Lane of Bruceville-Eddie, Texas. Counsel to discuss, consider and probably take action on a request by Bradley Jones Bowman, Bowman Consulting for a variance at two oh one Archie Lane. That's the one we just talked about, so this is, they're wanting to have a variance of, okay, got it?
What?
Yes, Mr. Wiggins?
Okay, now, I don't know if counsel has it, but Pam sent it to us from MRB. Uh, and MRB basically says, from the way I'm reading this, you can correct me if I'm wrong, it says that, uh, that it'll show, it says a replat must meet final plat requirements and it gives a subdivision ordinance section. And number two, it says shall, the final plat shall show building setback lines and fi- and then another one says a final plat shall show certification by a registered public surveyor. And the last one, it just is, knowledge is, uh, about the construction plans are not applicable uh, because improvements are not proposed, so he's okay with that one, but not the other ones. So, this is what our engineer recommends. So maybe we, you know, in the past, if our engineer recommends it, then that's what we do.
Yes sir.
And that's what we've done, I'll put it that way. So it's gonna be my, um, motion to, uh, that we, that we deny the variances, uh, based on the engineer's recommendations and, and what they state in their letter.
You want the engineer's report, I didn't hear it.
Uh, no, Pam emailed it to you.
Well, see, I, I've getting no emails from anybody, I, 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 I would. I, I'm, I'm getting no emails from nobody, I, I haven't seen this variant.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can you kinda let me fill me in on the that?
Yeah, can we, Pam, you wanna fill in on what the MRB said?
Uh, where's the, uh, where's the-
Did you get, yeah.
You want him to, here, just read it.
Yeah, yeah, I won't take back, but, yeah.
I, I've got one in my office that you could have to look at.
No, I didn't, you did. Jerked it out of my hand, it's on camera.
You too. It's on camera, you're being a bully.
Which basically I emailed it to them so they will do the final plat, correct the final plat.
Right.
'Cause they have to, that will probably come to us next meeting, I would assume.
But they're, they're not, they're not building anything, they're not changing anything with the land, it's just-
They're splitting.
Okay, so they're, they'll have to do, jump through another hoop and then they can get it done, okay.
Yeah.
Basically, yes sir. So we're just gonna go with the recommendation of what MRB says until our next meeting?
Yes.
That's, that was my motion, yeah, yeah, I've denied the variance, yeah.
Yeah.
You seconded it.
Yeah.
I got you.
Yeah.
You made a second.
Richard, why are you not getting emails, do we not have the right address, email address?
My city email messed up, uh, two months into my, into my term and, and-
He hasn't gotten in a long time, he has to be fixed.
And he, he just, uh, can't, used to just send it to my personal email.
Yeah.
And I, I-
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I, I get nothing, I'm-
Okay, all right.
I'm a low-tech redneck anyway, so, but yeah, I'll, I'll get you my email.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Did we all, we all vote?
All in favor? Unanimous, thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Don't jerk it out of my hands.
Okay, uh, since you don't get emails, I sent one out to you, I didn't know that, I don't have your personal one, but you need to come up with some questions for our application.
We have some clarification, Mr. Mayor.
Do we have a second on that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I got my questions, I'll ask them.
Well, you got, okay, go for it. Okay, all right, number eleven, staff report. Counsel to discuss and consider staff report for the city administrator, chief of police, city attorney, consulting engineers and department heads. And y'all have all of that in y'all's packet, if y'all have any questions for the water department, Gene's back there, you have anything for the police department, the chief is back there, if you have anything for the city administrator, good luck.
The only thing, hold on.
Yes sir.
Okay, hold on. Oh, no, on, on the police report is, uh-
Chief.
Chief, that, uh, it was on your report about the, about the citations there that, at, at two thirty-eight, Melissa, and as you know, you was here at their last meeting when Mr. Thomas got up and, and spoke and, and we couldn't ever say anything. Do you have anything to say or, uh, what he's, what he alleged at that meeting?
Uh, yes sir, uh, I think there's two things to address, the, the dog bite. Uh, whenever we went out there to the property the first time, uh, to check everything out, talk to all the tenants that were living in RVs, 'cause there was additional RVs out there at that time that people were living in, basically renting, you know, in, renting RVs or renting, you know, basically living out there and paying rent. Uh, whenever they, 'cause they were out there prior to Mr. Arnold moving out there and then he, he said that once he moved out there, he made those other people leave and started cleaning up the property and there was improvement. But whenever we went out there the first time, um, there was an aggressive dog. Uh, it wasn't on a leash or a tether or anything like that, so it had free roam, but it, it was a mama dog that had just had puppies, but it wasn't Mr. Arnold's dog, it was one of the tenants' dogs that was out there. And while we were out there checking the property out, um, we never got real close to it, but we had walked by, 'cause the dog was living in a shed, like a small shed, like you put lawn mowers in and that size of shed, that dog was living in there with the puppies. And so, we walked by the first time and it charged us aggressively and I just told it, get back and, you know, I was loud and, you know, it went off, did its own thing. But then after we checked everything out, as we were leaving, the dog charged again and bit Martinez on the heel of his, like, boot. So it didn't actually, you know, bite him and break the skin, it still bit him, but it bit him on his boot, 'cause we wear, you know, higher boots. So luckily it protected his leg from getting bit, but due to the dog's aggression and everything, he just quickly did like a glancing pepper spray, so I didn't hear the dog, you know, cry or anything like that, I don't even know if it actually got, you know, affected by it, but that was his reaction to the dog biting him and so that's what, what happened with that. Um, and then the other thing, I just to clarify, is whenever I went out there the second time to follow up, I had texted, or I actually tried calling Mr. Arnold, um, and he didn't answer, but then later he texted me and he said, I saw you had called, what's up? Or what can I help you with, something like that? And I just told him that I wanted to follow up, come out to the property, check things out, you know, get an update on what's going on, since we're, you know, enforcing city ordinances. And so he replied back and told me that he would meet me at the gate and so that was his response, you know, 'cause the first time I went out there, I went onto the property, you know, the gate was open and everything like that, but the second time, I asked him if I could come by, come out in person, and he told me that he'd meet me at the gate. And so then we set up a time for the next day and I went out there, um, and whenever I met him there, the gate was shut, it was chained and locked with a padlock, and then he was standing at the gate and he had two dogs with him. And so, you know, he didn't, you know, openly say, no, you can't come onto the property, but just based off him saying, I'll meet you at the gate, plus when I went out there in person, the gate was shut and locked and chained. And so that, you know, to me, when I see that, you don't really have to say anything, that basically tells me, I don't want you on my property. That's the, you know, when I saw that, that's, that's the impression I got. And so I just left it at that and I asked him, you know, what had been done, uh, as far as progress and, and how things are going, and he just replied, things are going slow. And, you know, I could, I couldn't see everything on the property, but I could see that nothing, or besides, you know, people had, that were living out there previously had been removed, you know, and there had been some cleanup. Other than that, there really hadn't been any other progress made, but that, that's what happened with that, so.
Okay.
Thank you, Chief.
Oh.
The disposal of the blackwater, did he ever give you information on the pumping company he was using? Did he ever submit that to you?
No, ma'am, he didn't submit it to me, but I, I did ask him to send me the company's number, but I never got anything, but, um, he, whenever OSSF, whenever I went out the second time, we didn't, you know, it was never planned to happen the way it did, it was just, you know, timing of, of how it happened, 'cause OSSF, whenever they got the referral to come check out the property, inspect the property for potential violations, um, normally it takes them a while to come out, but in this particular case, they came out, basically, I think, the next day after the, you know, request had been made or within a day or two. And so the day that I went out to inspect the property the second time, as soon as I was leaving, I was notified that they were coming out to inspect the property, but they were, uh, Mr. Arnold provided them with documentation to support that a company was pumping out the, the blackwater.
Okay, okay.
So, I, I just, you know, they were satisfied with, with the information, they were satisfied with their inspection, so I, you know, I trusted their, their report.
That's what they do.
Right.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
So, just two things, when you were first on the property, did you see any indication that they were dumping the blackwater or anything, had that smell, anything?
No, sir, I didn't see or smell anything that would be indicative of sewage being dumped out on the ground.
Okay, and second question, did, during that second conversation, you never actually asked if you could come onto the property?
I didn't specifically ask, can I come on your property, I just felt, you know, by, by the things I saw and the, the information, you know, Mr. Arnold, by him telling me, I'll meet you at the gate, plus what I saw when I went out there, I felt like, you know, he's not gonna let me, even if I ask him, so what's the point? So I didn't specifically ask him, hey, can I come on your property? I just felt like he didn't want me on there based off his response and, and the things I saw when I went out there.
That's all I have.
All right, Mr. Wiggins? Oh, no, no, okay, all right, okay, okay.
When, when y'all went out there the first time, was y'all walking around his property?
Yes, sir.
When that dog bit y'all?
Yes, sir.
Did y'all have permission to walk his property at that time?
I didn't call him up, but he, he came out and met us and was talking with us, he never-
He was there with y'all?
He was there with us, not, he didn't walk out there right, I think he probably saw us, but he had to have seen us because we were out there talking to his sister-
Oh, okay.
And the other tenants.
So y'all didn't just walk out there and nobody was there and you walked around?
Right, we, we were talking to people.
Okay, yeah, I got you.
Mr. Arnold saw us out there, he came out there and met us and he, we continued the conversation.
I got you.
But he never asked us to leave or anything like that.
All right.
And which, you know, to make it clear, if he had told me to leave, I would've gladly left, so. But there were no tre- there was nothing posted, no trespass, anything like that, so we were there to, to, to enforce the ordinances and to see, 'cause we had gotten complaints. So we were following up with those complaints as to see what was going on.
Actually, one, one clarification.
All right, uh, thank you, Chief, okay, yes sir.
Now, just to be a hundred percent clear, you are by law standard practice as a police officer, you have an open gate, no signs, nothing like that, you're allowed to go on the property to address complaints, have, investigate calls and stuff like that, correct?
Yes, sir, that's what I was doing.
Just wanna make sure we had that out there in open case somebody like that.
Actually, actually, let me, let me add to that. Um, he went out there actually as a code enforcement officer and Texas state law actually allows a code enforcement officer to enter property without permission to investigate a complaint. So it's different than a police officer, uh, who's held by certain warrant standards or probable cause, a code enforcement officer, uh, 'cause I looked it up to find out, is there a difference between a code enforcement and a peace officer in the state? And they're allowed to go on the property to follow up on a complaint without permission.
All right, okay, thank you, Chief.
Yes, ma'am.
That's it, thank you, okay, uh, another one was the water?
Yeah, water, on that water, water report, I'm just gonna do a little summary, Gene, you know, I usually do a little summary.
Okay, that's fine.
And, and so we pumped one million five hundred and thirty-four thousand gallons less than last month. We flushed seven hundred and seventy-four thousand six hundred gallons less than last month. We used one million seven hundred and twenty-three and three hundred gallons less than last month. Our water loss was nine hundred and sixty-three thousand five hundred more gallons than last month and had two more leaks than we had last month. And our loss percentage was four point nine percent more than last month and we sold about fifty-two percent of the water we pumped.
Okay, all right.
That's it.
All right, anybody else have any more questions or anything? If nothing, we'll move right along, okay? Uh, all right, going to number twelve, it's the consent agenda. All items listed on a consent agenda will be considered by the city council and will be enacted on by one motion. Uh, there will be no separate discussions of these items unless a council member or a member of the public so requests. A, approval of the minutes, B, financial for September of twenty twenty-five, C, donation acceptance. And that's it, that's social fairness, okay, Mr. Wiggins?
I'll pull A and B.
A and B, okay.
And I have a question about A and I'd like to pull C as well.
So, so pull C too?
Basically pull everything.
Okay, we're, we're gonna talk, discuss it all, all right?
We'll try to be quick on mine, though.
That's fine, no problem, okay, uh, Mr. Wiggins, since you pulled A and B?
Okay, I think Mr. Richardson pulled A also.
Oh, yeah.
But, on, on, on my part, on A, under the regular city council meeting, uh, it needs to state the minutes on there.
Minutes?
Yeah, and, and then, I just overlooked that.
Okay.
Uh, other than that, that, that was all I, only correction I think.
Mr. Richardson?
I just got a quick question on the approve, on the minutes. I see why we put the first pages and everything on here, but are we required to put all the attachments? 'Cause they were already on the previous thing.
I know.
That makes sense, that, to me, that just seems like a waste of paper.
It, it, well, yeah.
But if we're required to do it, I understand.
No, we don't have to, no sir.
Okay, that's-
As long as y'all have a copy of it.
Yeah, I think we just need the minutes, I agree with you, just need to-
As long as it has the-
Uh, no, Pam had something.
I mean, it's-
Okay, in the past, I would always copy kids-
Okay, in the past, I would always copy kids, comments, and put it on the minutes. So instead of you copying and pasting, well, in the minute packet, we don't have to look under what their reports are, they're put in a packet when you go look at the minutes attached to A, B, and C. Now, I don't have to put them in a package for y'all to have a copies of it, but that's the way I have to send it to the public.
Yeah, okay, okay, that's all right.
That's fine.
I don't want to confuse you.
To show that that's the report that's A.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
So we need, we need to correct, make the correction of that to minutes.
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll make that clear. Okay, B.
And then on the, uh, finances, a little summary here. So for our physical year from October twenty-fourth to September twenty-fifth, the general fund, the Marla Investment Account, which is our reserve fund, we put in three hundred and fifty thousand and took out one million six hundred thousand, which equates to like one million two hundred and fifty thousand that we had to take out of this reserve fund to pay our bills. And then in the water fund, the City of Bruceville Eddie Supply Investment Account, which is our reserve fund, we did not put anything in for the year, but we took out five hundred and three thousand two hundred dollars. So the total between the general fund and water fund taken out was one million seven hundred and fifty-three thousand two hundred dollars. And according to our finance reports that we got this month, the, uh, general fund lost one million one hundred and thirty-three thousand eight hundred and three dollars, and the water fund did good, it only lost sixty-six thousand four hundred and fifteen dollars. So for a total of one million one hundred and forty thousand two hundred and eighteen dollars. So the whole point to all of this, folks, is that reserve fund is important, and there's people out there that think we need to use that money in the reserve, it's just burning a hole in their pocket, I guess, because we got it. But as y'all can see, what I've just read, how much we had to take out, what would we do if we did not have that money in the reserve fund? We'd be in trouble.
So you're, you're just explaining this?
Yeah, 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 I, I wanted, because the, the finances are locked, and people look at them online, maybe they don't go through it as detailed as I do, and so I can have a little summary like this, and then they can hear that.
No problem.
And know how important those reserve funds are.
Yes, sir.
That's all. So.
Yes, sir, thank you. Now we'll get to C in just a second.
So at the end of the physical year, what was the total left in the reserve fund? Which one?
Uh.
No, okay, and, and the water fund, uh, one million three hundred and sixty-four thousand one hundred and forty-four dollars, I'll call it. And out of that, yeah, uh, yeah, that's right, okay, that's at the water fund. And on the general fund is, uh, the Marla account, let me see here, is one million six hundred and fifty, two hundred and seventy-nine dollars, I'll call it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. All right, all right. Uh, Mr. Richardson, you want us to pull C?
I just have a quick question, is Mrs. Compton's name, is that correctly spelled?
Doris Compton?
My first name was, no, the first name is not.
That's all, that's all I wanted to.
It says Dolores.
I'm used to people misspelling my name.
I didn't think it was spelled correctly.
I didn't either.
I just like us to change it to the correct spelling.
Okay, we can, we'll amend that.
Yeah.
Still, we should at least get your name right.
Yeah, I, I asked that question, and I was told it was.
Yeah, we'll get that done.
Yeah, anyway, with that said, I'll, I'll approve the, uh, consent items.
None of them.
Uh.
They've all been pulled, they were all pulled.
I know, but I'm going to go ahead and approve them, I pulled them to talk about them.
Gotcha.
Yeah, I'm going to make a motion, I'm going to make a motion to approve the.
A, B, and C.
The consent agenda items.
Okay.
With the, with the, uh.
Amended.
Amended, as amended, yeah.
Two things, yes, okay.
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Richardson seconded.
Which was A and C.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Unanimous? Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. All right, moving right along, thirteen, uh.
What's, yes, ma'am?
Oh, did that, somebody else? I'm sorry.
We looked on your water bill, and that's where we got the spelling of your names. So call, call us and have it corrected, so.
On the water bill.
Yeah.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, appointment of the BEEDC director, counsel to discuss, consider, and partly take action to approve, uh, directors to seat one of the Bruceville Eddie Economic Development Corporation. Did you have something you would like to say about this, sir? Or you just want us to make a motion? Or take a vote?
Uh, for the public's knowledge, Mr. Tolbert has resigned, um, and we thank him for his service, that leaves a vacancy. Until I walked in tonight, I only knew of one applicant, and I was the one that encouraged her to apply. Uh, I think she brings a wealth of civil engineering experience and business experience, so I'm obviously pro that candidate who is Ginger Tolbert, currently in Europe, on a trip right now, but I have not had the opportunity to review the other, there's two other applicants. I reviewed the one just quickly tonight, but, um, I believe that we're going to have vacancies soon as well, more vacancies, so I don't know what the, I, I can't recall off the top of my head when Kent reappointed, but I know every year we have a vacancy. Um, it seems to me we are going to have another vacancy soon, I think, or another two vacancies potentially.
Next year. Yes, sir.
So what I'm asking you tonight is, I would like, I, I request you approve Ginger Tolbert, and then I would be more than happy to meet with and review the other applicants for the next vacancy that becomes available, but I just, I haven't had a chance to, to, you know, to talk with those folks.
All right, we thank you for your recommendation, okay? All right, uh, Mr. Agur?
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we approve Ginger Tolbert.
Uh-huh.
Uh, to seat one.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Joyce seconded.
Uh, discussion.
Do we have any discussions?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay, after, after looking at all the three, uh, applicants there, I do believe that Ms. Tolbert is the most qualified for this position.